Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McColsky.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Leaksmay.
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
Mayor, I request that there be one change to the agenda for C under presentations. If we could move that to for A, moving A and B down to B and C respectively.
Support.
Polika.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
McColsky.
Yes.
Leaksmay.
Yes. So we'll start with our police awards presentations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm honored to come before you and recognize some really fantastic police work. And it was an unfortunate incident, terrible act of violence that somebody was shot and killed in our city. Our police department responded and couldn't be more proud of our membership. They responded professionally and through dogged police work, they were able to identify the suspects involved and eventually affected arrests and charged one of those suspects. So we're going to recognize some really fantastic police work tonight. Want to call your name, please come forward. Officer Stephen Rowe. Officer Sarah Salkevich. Officer Kevin Jerome. Officer Brett Bush. And Officer Eric Morochek. Just kind of stick together. On Sunday, March 9th, 2025, at 1:45 hours, at Southbound Woodward, near Eight Mile Road, Mamadou Diallo was shot and killed in apparent incident of road rage. As members of the Patrol Division, Sergeant Evan Toizen, Officer Kevin Jerome, Officer Stephen Rowe, Officer Eric Morochek, Officer Brett Bush, and Officer Sarah Salkevich demonstrated professionalism and teamwork. Officers Jerome Rowe, Morochek, Bush, and Salkevich were the first to respond to the scene. As a unit, they rendered aid to Mr. Diallo, secured the scene to preserve evidence, and worked diligently to identify potential witnesses and obtain statements. These officers also supported members of the Oakland County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab as they processed the scene for evidence. Later that morning, Sergeant Toizen, who couldn't be here tonight, identified additional witnesses and evidence while assisting investigators by canvassing the area. The successful outcome of this investigation may not have been possible without the contributions of these officers. Sergeant Toizen, Officer Kevin Jerome, Officer Stephen LaRoe, Officer Eric Morochek, Officer Brett Bush, and Officer Sarah Salkevich demonstrated outstanding professionalism and teamwork. They are credited, they are a credit to the Ferndale Police Department and the residents of our community. For their actions, these officers have been awarded the unit commendation.
Thank you, officers.
We kind of broke the awards up in different phases because it's such a large investigation. It was spread over such a long period of time. And there are so many officers who were, played a critical role in this where we just really had to break it up. While assigned to the Patrol Division, Captain Casey O'Loughlin, Officer Brian Frazier, Officer Paul Skomsky, Officer Courtney Link, Officer Joe Milabar, and Officer Christian Bart demonstrated professionalism and teamwork when they were called upon to support the investigation of the murder of Mr. Diallo. These officers assisted with the execution of multiple search warrants across the tri-county area. A successful operation would not have been possible without their support. These search warrants resulted in the arrests of three suspects and the recovery of important evidence, which subsequently led to charges, including murder in the second degree. Captain O'Loughlin, Officer Frazier, Officer Skomsky, Officer Link, Officer Milabar, and Officer Bart demonstrated outstanding professionalism and teamwork. They are a credit to the Ferndale Police Department and the residents of our community. For their actions, they have been awarded the unit commendation. Well, Property Officer Stephen LaRoe, please come forward. Property Officer Stephen LaRoe demonstrated professionalism and teamwork when called upon to support the investigation of the murder of Mr. Diallo. Property Officer LaRoe aided investigators by cataloging and storaging, I'm sorry, and storing a large amount of evidence, including biological specimens, firearms, ammunition, and miscellaneous items that required additional processing. Property Officer LaRoe also improved the efficiency of the investigation by personally transporting evidence critical to the investigation to the Oakland County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab to ensure timely processing. A successful investigation would not have been possible without his support. This evidence led to charges, including murder in the second degree. Property Officer Stephen LaRoe demonstrated outstanding professionalism and teamwork. He is credited, he is a credit to the Ferndale Police Department and the residents of this community. For his actions, Property Officer Stephen LaRoe has been awarded the unit commendation. Detective Lieutenant Daniel Kuzdale, Detective Antonio Prue, and Detective Matt Goble demonstrated exceptional leadership and investigative skill while investigating the murder of Mr. Diallo. Detective Lieutenant Kuzdale, Detective Prue, and Detective Goble obtained evidence and intelligence that proved critical to the investigation. Additionally, their experience and leadership proved invaluable as they coordinated the efforts of investigators both locally and regionally. Detective Lieutenant Kuzdale, Detective Prue, and Detective Goble were instrumental in the planning and execution of multiple search warrants, coordinating the efforts of more than 80 law enforcement officers across the tri-county area. These search warrants resulted in the arrests of three suspects and the recovery of important evidence, which subsequently led to charges, including murder in the second degree. Detective Lieutenant Dan Kuzdale, Detective Prue, Detective Goble demonstrated outstanding leadership, initiative, and investigative skill. They are a credit to the Ferndale Police Department and to the residents of our community. For their actions, they have been awarded the departmental citation. There are many, many more awards that the officers just couldn't be present. Members of the Oakland County Crime Lab, members of the FBI Task Force, all received awards and commendations for their work in this outstanding police work in this case. We're going to meet with those officers individually to give them their awards. But there is about 35 total that were written. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the officers for their swift action and their duties. We appreciate them a great deal. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, officers.
Next, we'll be moving to the second presentation, which is the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission Annual Report.
Good evening, May and Council. This is the 2024 Sustainability Environmental Sustainability Commission Report. Our 2024 Chair was not able to join me this evening, so I'll be giving the presentation. We will jump right in with a little background for residents or any folks who want to attend meetings. The commission is dedicated to furthering the city's sustainability goals. We meet the first Monday of each month at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. There are nine community members on the commission either passionate about or subject matter experts in sustainability. And they support my efforts as the Zero Waste Manager and the rest of the city's efforts in our sustainability programming. And I, excuse me, we do invite members of the public who, many members attend, many members attend our meetings and then have joined our commission. And we're always excited to have members of the public with us. So I will not read directly from the charter. But ideal, to summarize, our commission members are here to support city staff, you know, council members in our sustainability goals and this process. We have an aggressive climate plan. We have other aggressive goals. And we really couldn't do this work without them. So we'll start with the 2024 goals. Each year, the commission sets goals at the beginning of the year. And we work towards, you know, accomplishing them and in small bite-sized increments, we meet once a month for about an hour and a half. So we recognize it's not a large amount of time. So in 2024, the commission wanted to develop a comprehensive plan for residential energy efficiency. They wanted to finalize the zoning ordinance or feedback on the zoning ordinance in conjunction with the planning staff and the planning commission, and engage in more educational events. So that could be tableings, trainings, anything in person, or that could be educational materials that go out in our newsletter, that go out on their blog, the webpage, or other content of that nature. So in 2024, the commission formed a subcommittee to work on residential energy efficiency. They've been working on developing targeted literature based on public permit data. So looking at how do we best support residents who will be needing updates coming to their home based on past data. And so they're working on some literature and creating a more detailed plan, which we'll hear coming up. We completed the feedback process with staff and the planning commission on the review or the review committee for the zoning ordinance. We're very happy to see a lot of content that ended up there and support that work throughout. And on the community engagement and education front, the commissioners attended either with me or without me solo. They attended six community events, passing out literature and informing residents on our programs, passing out the seeds from our seed grant that we received, and other just answering general questions about sustainability in Ferndale. And they also created content for each of the quarterly newsletters. They didn't always make it into the newsletter, but that content is available and content that we're very happy that they've developed. So some facts and figures about sustainability in Ferndale or from the city. We had 193 signups for the Residential Compost Drop-Off Program. We're up to over 1,300 signups total. We composted 209,000 pounds of food scraps in the program, which we're really excited about. We recycled over 600 pounds of batteries. I say over 600 because we, A, haven't gotten final figures back from our provider, but also that was picked up in the late summer, and we've been collecting more since. So we have a lot of batteries, which is really exciting. There's piling up in my office right now, so. And we had 27 new signups for the Plan Natural Landscape Program, which was, we had double digits the year before, but not over 20. So we're very excited to see more folks engaging in that program. I will say there's a little bit of potentially missing data, just the forms not being switched over. So we know that there are more folks participating in the program than 118, but we're happy with that. Those facts and figures. Again, the six community engagement events that commissioners attended, that is not comprehensive of all the events that I attended. And then for the third consecutive year, Ferndale was certified gold for the Michigan Green Communities Challenge. That was actually the 2023, so we've been gold 2021, 2022, and 2023. This year, we are working on 2024's submission. And I expect us to be gold, if not platinum, which is the new tier. So we're working up towards that. They had to give us, they had to add more tiers for other municipalities. We're going to eventually work up to that. For 2025, the commission again is working on the comprehensive draft for residential energy efficiency. They set themselves a six-month goal, so come see us in August. It's a goal that they've set for themselves, which is very, very exciting. Again, rolling back the educational events, both the commission, I think the general public, myself, we were very, very happy with the educational engagement and the community events that commissioners attended. I think having those face-to-face relationships are very important, so we're excited to continue that. And then we emphasize re-education in that. I think it's always important to reemphasize what folks have been doing and what the city has been doing, not just talking about new programs. And then commissioners are taking more of an active role in other committees, council, or other organizations throughout the city, so that could include School Board, DDA, and acting as ambassadors as such. So taking ownership of other, you know, commissions and boards, staying aware of what they're doing, attending meetings when possible, and providing updates to the rest of the commission. So we're very excited for more collaborative efforts. We've already had at least one presentation from city staff, and we'll expect more departments and working with more commissions. We've had a presentation from Fab last month, so that continues, and we're very excited about that. So I was told to keep it to five minutes, so I'm going to wrap it up. Questions?
Does Council have any questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Looking forward to that residential energy efficiency plan in six months. So next, we have 2024 Board of Zoning and Appeals Annual Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. As the mayor mentioned, this is the 2024 Board of Zoning Appeals Annual Report. I'm going to walk you through this pretty quickly. The, if you know the Chair, Ian Williamson, he chairs RBZA. We have a Vice Chair, Judy Palmer, Mayor Protem, McCols, Council Liaison. And then we have a number of members. We're pretty staffed right now. We do have one vacancy. I do know that someone recently applied. I am the Staff Liaison to the BZA. Meetings, we meet whenever an appeal is filed with the city clerk, so it's not very often. It's only when someone disagrees with the decision the CD Director has made or needs a variance due to a hardship or a practical difficulty. Last year, we had one meeting. And it was about Detroit Axle. They had a couple of variance requests. They likely could have waited until the code rewrite, and I think probably didn't get some of these variances, but they wanted to move quicker, so they went to the BZA and got a couple of variances kind of to that Set Two line, if you remember. Surface parking between a building and frontage, a couple little things. So they received four variances. And part of it too is trainings in conferences in learning more. So as of the date of the staff report, two members of the BZA responded with some classes they've recently taken. Nick Fiori has done Zoning Administrators Parts One and Two, Board of Zoning Appeals. He went to a conference. And then BZA member Klavenski attended a board and commission training with the city. I told mine to two minutes, so that's mine. Thank you.
Any questions from Council regarding the BZA Annual Report? Thank you, Roger. All right, so now I'm going to open up Code Audience at 7:21. Audience members, you can come up to the podium to speak on anything on or off the agenda. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name's Chris Johnston. I'm joined by Jesse Shepherd Bates, and we're here on behalf of Pig and Whiskey and DIY. We also work at the web and other such places. I've been told on multiple occasions by the city's Director of Special Events, Michael Larry, that the city of Ferndale has no concern whether an event in Ferndale is financially successful or not. As a Ferndale business owner for nearly 30 years, this has never sat well with me. I do not think that attitude is part of what has made the city of Ferndale the great place that it is. Our events are held to rules and standards that the events the city puts on have not been. Last summer, our event, Pig and Whiskey, vendors were told they could not sell bottled water to guests in the heat of July because bottled water is not eco-friendly. Yet the very next month, vendors at the Ferndale Dream Cruise, arguably the least eco-friendly event that there is, were doing so. At our events, vendor vehicles have to be off the event space before the event is open to the public. Food trucks are locked in their spaces all weekend. With any restocking by them or other artists or vendors needs to be hand-carded in. At the Dream Cruise, the cars are coming and going, as we all know, seemingly non-stop, and setup continues while the event is taking place. Last year at Pig and Whiskey, our vendors were told as they were setting up that morning that they could not open until all their serving materials and packaging met the eco-friendly standards for Ferndale's events, causing the vendors to stop setting up and leave to go and purchase those things. While vendors at the Dream Cruise went unchecked the entire weekend and were allowed to do as they liked. Similarly, our barbecue vendors were not allowed to begin selling until all the surfaces of the parking lot were covered with tar paper for protection, which I understand. But again, one month later, this was not at all enforced at the Dream Cruise. When I brought these inconsistencies up to the Special Events Director, he said to me, "Chris, you're a business owner. You know that not all of your employees are the same, and some are just bad apples that you have to treat differently." That doesn't sound like Ferndale to me. Last month, at another city council meeting, city council agreed to more costs and restrictions on events after being told repeatedly not to read too much into them, as they were only guidelines, not rules, and have flexibility. Apparently, the flexibility only pertains to the Dream Cruise, an event paid for with tax salaries, which is fortunate as it is anything but financially self-sustainable. That brings us to where we are today. Our events used to have music until 11:00 PM on Sunday night on our single stage with practically zero noise complaints. Then, without any warning, we were told that it would have to end at 9:00 PM. Since then, we have learned the hard way that when the music ends, in reality, so does the event. And that has hurt our vendors, the food vendors, the artists, many of whom are Ferndale residents, all of whom are our friends and people that we want to be successful, see successful. So I asked recently for the ability to continue music Sunday on the stage until 10:00 PM and was told that it couldn't be approved, citing the Special Events Policy Regulations, and that it would not be discussed. I guess we're a bad apple and don't deserve flexibility, let alone consideration. I was told that the only time exceptions to the regulations would be considered would be after the event has been approved by the Special Event Committee and sent to you for final approval. I love the city of Ferndale. Its residents make up a huge portion of our vendors, our musicians, our artists, and our attendees. But I do not want to put on an event less than what we feel all these people deserve. I'm sorry, but with all these unknown added costs and constraints, we will not be following through with our special event request when it comes to this year's Pig and Whiskey. All of us involved feel it is too late and too big a chance to take. And because of that, we decided to wait until distinction between guidelines and regulations, along with their enforcement, are straightened out. I hope they can be before DIY Street Fair in September, another event that is made up of many artists who are trying their best to do what they love to do in this horrible economy and who are the kind of apples that Ferndale and everyone else should be supporting. Thank you. I have copies of all the photos and everything else. Should anyone like them.
Sorry, through the chair. I would like a copy of all your materials, if I could. Thank you.
Yeah, if you could just give them to the clerk, he'll pass them out to us.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. I feel like I'm up here all the time. I should be getting investment on this podium. I do have some copies for you as well, based on what I'm speaking about. So tonight, I'm here to voice my strong support for the approval of the ordinance to amend Chapter Six, Building Regulation of the Ferndale Code of Ordinance to Establish a Vacant Structure Ordinance. For this matter, I have collected and provided a letter from Matt Connolly of 1859 Simms Street, and along with myself, 1845 Simms Street, along with photos, reports, and documentation regarding the ownership status of the property in question at 61963 Simms. I have been a proud resident of Ferndale for nearly five years, and from the moment I arrived, I have loved my neighbors and had a warm welcome. However, there has been an ongoing issue with the property at 1963 Simms. Sadly, the property owner, she died September 11th of 2024. The resident, both before and after their passing, the property has always remained a serious nuisance. The home has been barricaded. At the front steps, as shown in the photos I provided. The electric numbers were turned off. The mailbox is missing. Garbage has accumulated in the driveway, and an abandoned vehicle was left on the property for an extended period of time. In a deliberate attempt to evade accountability, the former resident even blurred the home on Google Maps to evade from city and also residents from reporting the home. On a regular basis, I apologize to anyone who may have eaten prior to this meeting. The former resident pumped human sewage from her basement directly into the street. This happened every year, three times a year. This has occurred. Despite numerous attempts and help from the city, and all of which were refused from the resident, she simply just refused to do it. The discharge from this home even caused an overflow into my own home through my sub-pump, resulting in property damage that I personally had to address. There has been countless incidents requiring police response due to safety concerns. The property has attracted rats. Shingles have been falling off from the roof. Among many other hazards, I have personally been involved with representing Simms and working with Roger from Code Enforcement's team, who along with his colleagues has gone above and beyond in trying to address this issue. The person who now, quote-unquote, owns the property, which I found out today that the home is still in Suzanne's name, as I pulled in on BSA before I got here. He resides in New York, and there is currently no after-power service at the property. During this past, nor emergency, there was a slip-and-fall accident on the premises. And earlier this spring, a DTE worker who was handling the tree removal and the branches, he also was injured on the property. As of right now, as I stated, the home is vacant. There is health concerns across the board, and I just hope that everyone votes yes in regards to implementing this ordinance.
What was that address again?
1963 Simms. If you Google it right now on Google Maps, it's completely blurred.
Is that as 1963?
Yep, Simms, yep. Which I didn't know that you can actually do that, which is, I kind of laughed when I saw it the first time, but yeah.
And you mentioned you had something you wanted to give to the city clerk?
Yes, there you go.
So, my name is Sam. I'm actually the owner next to this 1963.
I'm actually the owner next to this 1963. My address is 1971 Symes. I've been living there since 2017. Everything that Chris pretty much said, you know, I was, I lived it, and I'm still living it. They have not just rats, but groundhogs and other animals that go through from their side of the fence, under my fence, and I do have two dogs that I can't even let outside in the backyard alone, so that way they don't get these animals. I have to kind of keep them, watching them. Every summer, there's a mulberry tree that covers my whole yard as well. It's all over. It gets into my dog's fur. I have to constantly clean. It's all concrete, so I have to clean it. Like Chris said, again, when the sub-pump was pumping out the sewage, I would get smells. There's been tenants that she's had, I think she wasn't supposed to have, you know, smoking outside, doing all kind of stuff, drinking, kind of affecting my property, too. So I've had to put cameras all over my properties, too, just because I just didn't feel as safe who she was having it there. And I've contacted the city as well, like Chris said. I've reached out to a couple people, I don't remember the names, and they've tried helping. They've, you know, they've sent out letters about putting the address, the number, and closing it down. The fencing, she added those, too. But again, you can't see from my side. I can see what's in there. It's abandoned cars, bushes, there's even been toilets, tubs in the backyard. It's, it's pretty filthy back there. I don't have any pictures, but it's pretty bad, and anybody can come to my property, and they can look over the fence, and they can see what's in her property. So I'm just hoping the city could do something about it, because the street itself, I think, has beautiful houses, but that's just an eyesore. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Kristi, and I live at 3209 Chester Street. The house next to me, 3217 Chester Street, has been a big problem for the last couple of years. It was abandoned, and then the lady who owned it gave the keys to her brother under the guise of fixing it up. He promptly moved in, a gentleman who had just gotten out of jail after five years for aggravated stalking, and that's when the problems really started. We immediately had multiple unlicensed, unregistered cars on our street at all times of the day and night, car haulers dropping off cars. The police became a frequent friend to the neighborhood because they were there almost every day due to the fact that he was still engaging in domestic abuse with his live-in girlfriend, wasting city resources. Even at one point, when I was working from home in the middle of a Zoom meeting, I hear the police yell, "Michael, come out of your house," and the police are running through my backyard with guns drawn. The house has trash piled up next to it. The garage roof is caving in. When my husband was invited in by this gentleman that had moved into the house under the guise of fixing it up, the kitchen floor was missing, there was exposed plumbing, there was exposed electrical, there was piles of feces, there was standing water and mold in the basement. If it wasn't for Mr. Caruso and the Ferndale Police, I really don't know what we would have done over the last two years, the support that they've given us. But Mr. Caruso was really limited by the current code that is not amended to fully help the residents. I'd like to see this property become a viable single-owner, you know, single-family home, support the tax base of Ferndale, and really get my quiet neighborhood back to the beautiful place that it used to be. And so, thank you to the Ferndale Police, and thank you to Mr. Caruso for all the support they've given us, but I really hope you'll vote to amend this code to really bring up the standard for all Ferndale residents. Thank you.
Sorry, through the chair. What was the address number again?
That is 3217 Chester Street.
Call to audience is still open?
Melissa Billski. I live on Syme Street. I apologize for being late. I just walked in. So I'm a concerned resident of Syme Street. I have made many, many sea click fix. You know, I think myself, I have four, but I know other, you know, residents also have voiced their concern. It's just, it's, we drive down the street, we see, you know, water coming out of, we don't even know where of this home. We don't know where it's going. We don't know what it contains. We've called a couple times on that. It's just neglected, and we're just hoping that we can bring awareness today, and if you guys could take that into consideration, please. Thank you.
No more for participants for call to audience. I'm closing call to audience at 7:36, and we are now moving on to the public hearing, which I will open up at 7:36, and it is the second reading of the adoption of the triennial budget for the fiscal years ending in 2026 to 2028.
And I do have a brief presentation this time. Okay, so this is the second reading and hopefully final adoption of our triennial budget. And again, this is really the adoption for fiscal year '26 and then forecasts for '27 and '28. Where we are in the process, we are in that very last phase, which is the adoption of both the budget and the millage rates that are associated with the revenue from that. For FY '26, we have now fairly final rate projections for our millage. It does still reflect to continue that trend downward in terms of the overall millage rate that residents are impacted by from city services. As far as general fund revenue trends, it was asked during our last discussion on this topic that we look at forecasting FY '27 and '28 in a manner that no longer shows the voted millage. As you can see, that trend drops off dramatically in those years due to the loss of roughly $4.3 to $4.5 million. The ensuing cuts that were necessary to make that happen involved extensive reductions in staff levels across nearly all departments, as well as several other key items which we'll look at. So accounting for that headly, these are the departments that would have been impacted in '27 and '28. As noted, there's about 31 additional budget cut, budget positions cut. This is in addition to ones that we've already identified an opportunity to reduce or streamline within the FY '26 budget. This also looks at eliminating nearly all capital improvement and facilities repair projects, other than emergency repairs across all city facilities. It includes no investment in parks and emergency repairs, only in most other facilities. We'd also look at significantly longer replacement periods for vehicles, which would increase emergency costs in the short run and downtime for those vehicles, which would likely interrupt services. And then it eliminates the IT contract in favor of very limited in-house staffing capacity. This would eliminate any sort of public support or in-house support for public meetings being hosted virtually. On the more positive side, and I'll note here, this is a very quick analysis that was done. If we get to that point, obviously, much more thought and care will be given to that process, but at this time, this is the type of very dramatic action that would be necessary to balance those budgets in future years. On the positive note, in FY '26, we were able to complete an analysis of the healthcare cost projection for retirees. I want to give special credit to our HR department for their assistance with that. This was last looked at in fiscal year '23. We now have an updated five-year projection that looks at the cost savings that we had already been realizing. And what this resulted in is a net reduction in expenditures on the fiscal year '26 budget side in future years moving forward, to the tune of about $280,000 to the good for fiscal year '26. That's just really showing that long-term positive impact that making the changes to retiree healthcare has on our budget and the more stable trajectory that it puts us on. This impacted nearly every department, so I didn't list them all out, but if you're looking for the line item code specifically, they end in 7.16.115.
Through the chair. However, the retiree health program is not affected by the general fund?
Yes, the retiree healthcare program is paid for out of the departments that the retirees are from. So we try to do a split by department. So any fund that ever had staff is going to be paying towards retiree healthcare.
What happened to that coming out of, I want to say OPEB. It's not OPEB.
So, OPEB is, I don't know that there is a separate fund accounting for that. I'd have to circle up with Dan and Phil, but at this point, the way that this current year's budget and next year's budget and all future year's budget had been presented is that there are line items within each department that have an assigned portion of retiree healthcare cost, based on the number of retirees from that division or department.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, we do still try to meet basic facilities maintenance needs, but the gap is significant. This, this year again, we will not be funding the full needs of all of our facilities, and in future years, FY '27 and '28, those are completely eliminated. So what would happen in '26 would really be the extent of what we could accomplish in the near term without the millage dollars. Other major funds that have some changes, major streets, we have planned transfers in support of the local streets fund, which is allowed under Act 51. And for the auto parking fund, we removed the depreciation expense to show the true cash position of that fund. And underwater and sewer, we noted that the complete funding for the lead service Ryan replacement is still uncertain. Any questions?
I will open up the public hearing to the audience at 7:43.
Paul Beasley, West Maplehurst. Thank you for providing that presentation, and I really appreciate that. When you were looking at reductions, were you looking, or did you look specifically at line items for training and development in memberships and dues? And if not, from my rough estimate, it's about $200,000 per year?
Yes, so there are reductions in the, specifically of training category. There are a few line items that were reduced from this budget iteration compared to our workshop. In terms of membership dues, that stayed relatively consistent, although I'd have to see what the breakout is between training versus membership dues to determine if anything wasn't a reasonable position to have.
So, membership dues was approximately $50,000 annually, and training and education was about $150,000 annually. So when we're looking at reductions and potential loss of staff, I mean, that's with salaries in fringe, that's probably two and a half physicians. So I would encourage looking at that piece before adoption, because I, in budget times, I think that's significant, specifically not knowing what the exact memberships and dues or training is for. Thank you.
Public hearing still open? Open it up for council.
I think you have to close it.
Do we have to close it? I thought we closed it all together. All right, well, I will close public hearing for audience members at 7:45, and I'm opening it up for council at 7:45.
I really have anything major to add. I think it would be worthwhile addressing further the question about training and dues. One, it's not a particularly significant part of the budget, so it's not really where I would go to balance the books. Two, a lot of our membership dues are requirements for our staff. They must be paid because of their professional credentials. So we have memberships that are paid for police and fire, that are paid for our city planners. These are sorts of things that they have to be maintained, and part of the condition of employment or their bargaining agreement with the city is that we pay those costs. So some of those things are just unavoidable. Training, again, we can definitely continue to look at training budgets, but I also don't want a workforce that isn't trained and doesn't have the modern practices that we would want in our city. So, you know, I think when we're looking to balance the budget, you know, looking for the low-hanging fruit that is substantial, looking for things like vacant positions entirely, head counts overall, you know, 80% of your budget is labor, and so figuring out, you know, what departments can be leaner, which ones can't be, or where there's not a community desire for them to be. I don't think anybody wants a leaner police department or fire department, and so, you know, we would have to weigh those, we have to weigh those sorts of judgments as well. But on the whole, I think this is a good budget. I appreciate the work that was done to balance the forecast years despite the large chunk of revenue loss, and I think it's important that that was done, because I think it's important for folks to be able to look at a document and see what the consequences of that kind of loss are. So, you know, I want to thank the city manager and finance director and his team for the work they did to, and the assistant city manager, to put that together and kind of rework the budget to have a forecast that shows the impact of losing that kind of revenue. Other than that, I have no further questions. I also want to thank the city manager for being extremely responsive to me. It's probably no surprise to anybody in the public who knows me that I have a lot of questions about budgets and finance, and that happens a lot outside the public, off-camera. It's a lot of texting for Colleen throughout the day and at night and in the mornings and on the weekends with questions of random things. And so, you know, I appreciate the time and attention that was put in by her and James and Phil and Phil's team to responding to those questions. So, you know, I appreciate that. This is the most important thing a council does, is adopting its budget. Everything else, nothing matters if you don't have a budget, so you can't do anything. So, you know, the supporting of the council in doing this really important thing is really appreciated. So, thank you very much, all of you.
I'd also like to add that I think it's very important that the question came up regarding trainings and fees, because I will tell you that even council has trainings that we don't attend every single year. I can tell you, last year, I was invited to many, many trainings last year that I just didn't feel relevant or, or needed to, to attend because of the costs incorporated. And I figured that when we're in a better place, then maybe those trainings would be available to me. And there are times when, actually, I, it's funny, that when I go to these, some of the conventions that I do go to, I actually pay my own fees. So I just would like that to be noted, that some of council, one, cannot always attend the trainings, and two, sometimes we pay our own. Any other questions from council or comments?
I have no questions, but I wanted to thank Phil for the spreadsheet version. Trying to go through the budget, line item by line item on a PDF, was a nightmare. The spreadsheet makes it a lot easier. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, through the chair. No, no questions, just... No questions, just a comment. So by law, we are required to approve a balanced budget for the next year. For several years, we have approved a, the current budget plus two years, what did you call it? Forecasting.
Forecast.
And then we, in a few recent years, we've added two additional years to kind of align with our capital improvement plan, which goes out five years. Which if, you know, the millage doesn't pass, we don't have to worry about those. So really, what really matters is this current year of balancing the budget. I agree, there's a number of things that need to be looked at when, if this doesn't pass and we have to cut $4 million out of the budget. I, you know, would look at some of the training. Some of the memberships are, like we said, are required. But I would look at cutting a lot of the fluff, like special events. You're not going to have enough police to fund them or to support them, so that's something that would be cut. Some of the DPW street services that are currently available, street trimming, some of that's just going to have to go by the wayside. I'd rather have that gone and more police. So, but that would all have to be determined for the following year, not necessarily this year. So the main purpose of the two forecasted was to just show what the impact would be, not specifically line by line. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments regarding the triennial budget?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the tri- what?
I'm closing the public hearing now officially at 7:52.
Oh.
And now?
I thought we already did that, sorry.
Yeah, I thought so too.
I move that we adopt the triennial budget for fiscal years 2025 and the forecast 2027 and 2028, as submitted by the city manager and finance director, and to adopt the resolution to set the FY '26 tax, water, sewer, and sanitation rates, as submitted by the finance director.
Support.
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
All right, I'm now moving on to the consent agenda item. It will be read. 7A, approval of the April 14, 2025 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the resolution honoring Elks Youth Week as of May 1st through the 7th, 2025. 7C, approval of the purchase order for spoils disposal from Waste Management in the amount of $35,000. 7D, approval of the listed appointments and reappointments to city boards and commissions. 7E, adoption of the ordinance to amend Chapter 22 of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances for Water System Protection. 7F, approval of the contract with RT Contracting, Inc. for code enforcement cleanup and mowing of city facilities. 7G, approval of the grant agreement with USA Swimming Foundation for $45,000. 7H, approval of the community project funding agreement with the Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $704,669. 7I, approval of Park Ferndale signage installation for transition to pay-to-play plate for pay-by-plate for $45,718.70. And 7J, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the finance director and subject to review by the council finance committee.
Sorry, just one point of order. 7G is for $4,500.
7G, $4,500. What did I say?
$45,000.
Oh, Lord.
That would be much nicer.
Yes, $4,500. Thank you.
Sorry, USA Swimming Foundation.
Very good. All right.
And just as a point of information, when we are talking about item 7C, the purchase order for the spoils disposal, I understand spoils to mean like the excess dirt and construction materials from a site? That's accurate in this case?
Our sweeper.
Street sweeper, okay, street sweeper type stuff. Okay, thank you, understood.
Don't worry about that either.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Or?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Weeks May?
Yes. Just ready to go, aren't you? All right.
All right.
All right, regular agenda. Item 8A, ordinance to amend building regulations of the Code of Ordinances to establish a vacant structure ordinance. CED Director Roger Russo.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As the mayor stated, this is the vacant structure registration ordinance. So I didn't fully plan the discussion. There's a couple slides to talk about the ordinance, and then some pictures of some things code enforcement is facing. So I'll start here. This is a picture that people would think does not exist in Ferndale too often. This doesn't exist because this was a stock picture, but this is very similar to a couple buildings that I've been in. Particularly, Council Pollocka and I toured the wire facility over at World Heights, and that is an industrial building that is vacant and looks very similar to this. The presentation I'm going to give focuses on CED's view of the vacant structure ordinance. This is a partnership with the fire department. The fire code and fire department has different rules and desires to inspect vacant structures. So if you'd like Chief Robinson to discuss it, she's here. But briefly, background, the why. Staff increasingly hears complaints about vacant structures in the city. It's mostly in the residential area from adjacent property owners, but it is sometimes about commercial vacancy. And you can imagine why we receive more complaints in the residential area. People live there, they live next to vacant structures, they're going to have more interest. Commercial is kind of quiet, but you can think of a lot of commercial buildings that you know of that are vacant. Industrial is even more quiet. That doesn't mean there's not those vacant structures for commercial industrial, it's just we hear more about residential. So that's generally what I focus on. The focus isn't on if it's good to have a vacant structure or a bad thing. We cannot allow, or we cannot tell someone they can't have a vacant structure. If someone wants to buy a property and leave it vacant, they absolutely can. The focus on this is health, safety, and welfare. That's the focus. If you want to have a vacant structure, completely fine. I don't understand it myself, but it needs to be maintained. Vacant structures, there's a couple different things to highlight in the ordinance, often become dilapidated. I'll show you a picture of one or two. They attract vermin, they invite dumping of garbage and other debris, and they contribute to blight neighborhoods. And then they adversely affect the tax base. People in neighborhoods don't invest in their own properties or are less likely to. There is investment that could happen in the vacant structure if a person lived in there or a family. I want to turn these over to being used again, where kids are living in them and going to our school district, supporting our school district, people are shopping in our downtown, and people are making investments in the community. So the proposed ordinance creates a six-month registration. There's some reasons why we went with the six-month. It includes an in-person inspection by CED and Fire in that six-month before the registration is issued, and then an exterior inspection by CED every single month. The person doesn't have to be on-site for the exterior inspection, but we want to make sure there's no points of entry that are open, there's no vandalism, there's no graffiti, there's no dumping. The fee staff has proposed is $600, which staff does feel is appropriate for the amount of work that will go in. When you think about rental inspections, the landlord wants something from the city. They want the rental inspection license because they want to rent the property. 95% of landlords on the rental inspection side comply. There are some that don't, and we have to ticket them to get them to get their registration or finish their inspection. But generally, the rental inspection is kind of a well-oiled machine. Landlords are used to it in other communities. The vacant structure program is not. People are not going to understand it. So getting ahold of people, finding out who they are because they're in an LLC, or they're in a family member who lives out of state, there's time to track the people down. They have no vested interest in getting the registration, when you think about it. So we're going to have to call them multiple times, tell them that we'll issue tickets if they don't get the registration. When we do go in there and we find things to fix up, it's going to cost money, so they're going to be hesitant and drag their feet on that. There might be resources from the building department, where the building official needs to swing by and see some building issues. So there will be a lot of work in these. Maybe down the line, after people get used to them and they're repeatedly getting their registrations, it'll be easier, but in the beginning part, it's going to be difficult. And for the community, staff has to go slow when we implement this. We essentially have two inspectors. We have a code enforcement officer and a rental inspector, and both are pretty busy in their duties. So if the community gave me 100 vacant structures tomorrow, we could not knock them out very quickly. So there will be, need to be some patience with the community as we slowly roll these out. I would hope we could do two a week by the time we contact the people, get them scheduled. And then again, there's going to be handholding on fixing them up after the fact. The proposed ordinance, it defines what a vacant and abandoned building is. Registrations are non-transferable, and they must be kept until it is no longer vacant and abandoned. It does exclude properties that have a rental license or a building permit. So if you're actively under a building permit and you're actively working on the project, then you would not get a vacant structure ordinance. There are people that use or will use the building permit to avoid the vacant structure ordinance. So it specifically says in there some language about it needing to be moving along in the construction process. A property owner can apply for an exemption due to individual circumstances. That's on a limited basis. If we let everybody get an exemption, it doesn't work well. But, you know, it's decently maintained and someone's in a nursing home, might be an exception we would grant. They're actively about to or actively going to put it on the market and can get me an agent agreement that it's going on the market soon. That would be something that's, it's going to sell, someone else is going to come in, we can give them an exemption for it. If I do, if the CED director does deny that request, it can be appealed to the city manager. If an owner does not get a registration, the city has a couple avenues to address that. The city can issue a citation. We can add the fee to the tax rolls. We can't force ourselves on someone's property, right? So if someone refuses, we can do an exterior inspection from the right of way in the neighbors and add it on to their tax roll. Technically, we can file a suit against the owner, don't really do that, or any other means available by law is in the ordinance. All right, I'm going to show you pictures, and the interesting thing is each one has a different story. Each one has, I inherited it, or I purchased it, or it was a tax foreclosure. And it is interesting, the comments you've received today, some of them were, in some of the pictures you'll see, the people lived in there. This wouldn't address that. If they live in there, this program wouldn't address it. A lot of these you'll see, you'll probably think, oh, that's code enforcement. Code enforcement can only go so far because, again, there's nothing the person wants out of it. So while there'd be an argument, some of this is code enforcement, we've gotten much better in holding people accountable, having a vacant structure ordinance is just one more tool to address it. There also will be an economic development connection. Every now and again, decently, I get requests from people, do we have a 5,000-square-foot building in the city? This is a great example that when Brett and Liz are out there inspecting, they can hear from the owner on what their plan is, push them along to rent it out, sell it. But also, if we find somebody in the community who's looking for a space, I can easily email Brett and Liz and say, do you know of a space like this? So it connects economic development, fire, neighborhood prosperity, it connects a lot of things together. Here are some pictures that I'm going to walk you through. I'm going to walk you through a video first. Here is a video that I got a call when I first started working here, probably eight months into it, where a neighbor said the house next to them was vacant and there were animals crawling in the roof. Didn't really believe it because I thought it's Ferndale, that we don't really have properties like that, but there is in fact a video. Whole family.
Oh.
This is real, this is...
Oh.
You know, what happens here? Animals are getting in the attic. Nobody's on-site to know what's happening. The person's difficult to get ahold of. Animals are getting in, causing damage. We recently had a building in the city that was in such bad shape, a home, it got turned down. It doesn't connect well with sustainability if we let a property get to this level. But there's one video. Let's go back. The rest are pictures. Here's a building, I tried to mark out anything identifiable. Here's a building, a person bought the tax rolls, they're interested in doing something. They don't have a push from us, right? We're trying to get them to do it, we can't make them. There's constantly graffiti on it. Yes, we have a, you know, contact person, but again, having the vacant structure ordinance where we're inside the building, fires addressing any fire issues, this could be a fire hazard, there could be electrical issues, would be much better. Before we issue the registration, the graffiti has to be off, the dumping has to be cleaned up. Again, a little bit of a code enforcement, but a vacant structure ordinance would help this a lot. Here's a picture of that building on the side. Here's a building that, you can't see it in this picture at Google Maps, the grass was as high as the middle of the window. It took me hours to track down the owner, finally got ahold of them. They ended up moving in with their parents, their parents were a little bit elderly. And she said, you know, I'm still paying the mortgage, I just don't do anything with it. Last time I was in there, I think there was about four feet of water in the basement. This was a vacant structure. This would have been a perfect one to be in before it got to that level. We had to push her on the code enforcement side, you know, it's time to sell it, this isn't good. And she actually did sell it, it's on the market, or it's recently sold. So now there's people living in this home and it's redone. Too much longer, maybe it would have had to have been torn down. Here's a home, again, a little different. This was occupied, so people did live in here. The vacant structure ordinance wouldn't have addressed this, but currently it is vacant. The person, one of the people recently passed away. It's in really bad shape on the inside. They are going to sell it, so we're getting there. This is actually probably naturally getting there on its own, but it's an example of one that maybe it wouldn't, maybe the people would be difficult, and a vacant structure would get us in looking at the building, looking at any fire hazards, looking at any code enforcement issues. Here's one of a person who's purchased a few properties in the city in the downturn, relatively cheap, probably about $40,000. And so, yes, we have outdoor storage rules, but the person uses this as a storage area. Again, a vacant structure ordinance, we'd be inside the building, we'd be looking at it. This does say that you can't have any vehicles on-site if it's vacant, so no RVs, no boats, there's no reason to have anything there. We do still follow the outdoor storage, so I think they still would get 36 square feet of storage. But we would be in there talking to the person, trying to push them to sell it or to get somebody in there. Here's one. Here's one. This doesn't look too bad, but it's somebody who bought it in the downturn, doesn't do anything with it. On the garage side, in the gutter side, yeah, I think the fascia is falling down and the gutters are falling down. We've connected with the people, we're working on them fixing it. But one more tool to be in there and looking at it would be good. Here is one that went into foreclosure, so the bank still would have to get a vacant structure registration. This is on the market now, so that's a good thing. It naturally went in its direction. I think it's probably been vacant for three years. You know, if we deal with it on the code enforcement issue, we don't get paid for it. If we're doing this on the vacant structure side, which is, a lot of these, we'd be dealing with code enforcement issues, we at least get compensated for the time. So we could have been pushing the bank along if we were involved in it. This one was in pretty bad shape on the inside. Here's one that I believe, Brett sent me these pictures today. You know, that would be a code enforcement issue, but there are a lot of other things going on, we're certain, inside. This person, I believe, purchased five or six buildings in the downturn. None of them are being rented out. They're all in a shape like this. There's another one. There's another one. Again, some of it's code enforcement, we got a report of broken windows here, so we were able to get the person to board them up. But to be inside and know what else is wrong would be great. Then I have a couple. Another one. Here's one on a corner, if anybody's familiar with this one. People bought it, they want to renovate it. It's been vacant ever since I've been here, so three or four years. We did get them to clean up the back a little bit, but there are a lot of issues with this one. Here's another one that the people spoke on Simes. Here's one, I didn't want to show this one too much. Again, somebody lived in here, recently left, probably four or five months ago. We've ticketed over the years, we finally got the person to sell it. So this program wouldn't have helped if the person was living in there because it's not a vacant structure at the time. Again, this moved positively in the right direction because we pushed hard on code enforcement. But some won't, and that tool will help. And I'm going to show some pictures of the inside of this building, which is a home in downtown Ferndale. And that was the inside of the home that you would not think we have in the community. So with that said, I belabored enough. This is a tool CED is asking for, the inspectors are asking for. If I really wanted to, I'd be honest with you, two people came and spoke, or three or four. It would not be hard to fill the council chambers with people who are at their wits' end with vacant structures in their neighborhoods. I'm available, and so is the chief, to answer any questions.
All right, open it up to council. And I think that we had one request to read something aloud?
Yeah, I can, do you want me to do it upfront and then we get into it?
I think, go ahead.
Okay, sure. I had a letter from a resident. "I am writing to wholeheartedly support the adoption of a vacant/abandoned structure ordinance. This has been my biggest concern as a resident since moving here 11 years ago. During this time, I've lived here, my block has been plagued by vacant and abandoned properties, including one three doors up from me that has not been inhabited in 15 years by my neighbors' estimation. Besides being an eyesore, it has led to all manner of pest problems as well. Recently, I was surprised to learn that vacant house three doors north of me, according to city tax website, is held in an IRA account. Neighbors have, indicates his neighbors have offered to buy the house and fix it up for the owner, the owner of record, I should say. A builder who's built four new colonials in the neighborhood offered to buy it, but she's consistently refused. I wish this ordinance had more teeth, but I understand that certain laws and risk aversion issues must come into play. Nonetheless, I am glad to see the city working to disincentivize and penalize bad faith property ownership in Ferndale. I hope you will vote in support of this or vote to continue its further development." I think that's from Jason Storms, resident of Ferndale. Northeast.
Open it up to council for discussion. I am sure that one of us, all of us, had all been approached by a resident that had some sort of issue regarding...
I mean, I'll say, you know, when I was campaigning for city council, also long ago now, I knocked on a lot of doors throughout the city, thousands of doors. And I, one, encountered a lot of these structures myself. So a lot of these pictures, I'm like, oh, I remember. I remember that house. I remember going to it and going, I'm not going on that porch, I don't think anyone lives here. I remember marking it in the software to say, I don't think anyone lives here, don't send people to this house. But I also talked to a lot of residents, and I will say consistently, one of the most common things I heard from people was, hey, while you're here at my door, there's this house a couple doors down. I've never known anyone to live there. What's the deal with that? I didn't know. I said, well, it's likely people bought it and they're sitting on it, they're holding it for either investment purposes or they had good intentions and they just can't get it off the ground. But this by far has been one of the most common things that I receive messages about that I, when I'm out in the community and talking to residents, they talk about this. Everyone's got that house. There's that house on the block. And this is just one more tool. I agree with Jason, the resident whose note I just read, I would like ordinance with even more teeth. Governments and Michigan have pretty broad police powers to enforce blight and public safety laws. And so I want to make sure that we are continuing down the path of finding ways to enforce that. Being a small community, you know, necessarily limits us in a lot of ways to the degree of, the aggressiveness of our enforcement or the breadth. We have, like you said, two code enforcement officers, so we're doing the best we can. But, you know, continuing to take advantage of everything the law lets us do to say like, hey, don't do that here. Don't bring that to our community. Don't buy these homes, don't let them, don't do, you know, demolition by neglect. Because eventually, these homes get to a point where we will step in, we will take an owner to court, we will have that property demolished because it has become so unsafe. So don't do that. Don't come to Ferndale and do that. This is not where we are acceptable. So I'm thrilled with moving forward on this. I too would like to see more teeth, but we'll continue to work through legally how far we can go on these things. But this is a good start, and, you know, thank you to you and to the chief especially, and all the CED staff for really putting your nose to the grindstone on this one. I know it was a lot of months in the making, but I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Just to add on to all of that, I agree there's a lot of homes that are, that fall into this category. There's also a lot of industrial and commercial businesses. And it's, you know, it's quite, it's quite disappointing to have to drive down Woodward or Nine Mile and see some of these businesses that, you know, could have a thriving business in it, and yet the business owners, the property owners, doing nothing. And a lot of it, you can just see in the, through the windows, you know, and there's nothing that you can really do about it. Like you said, you have no teeth. And that's what I really like about the ordinance is that it really, it really gives us the ability to force property owners to do the right thing for the community.
Through the chair, I have questions. And it's going to be just a battery of questions, so please bear with me. I too have been to vacant structures. Shocker, the person that deals with rats is hanging out around empty buildings on our G R bases. So I know that this is an issue, I'm glad to see this come forward. But I need some clarification on how specifically does the vacant structure ordinance address problems that our existing property maintenance code doesn't already cover? So our council member Johnson was just talking about blight and public safety. Does our code not already have things in it to exist blight and public safety or to enforce existing blight and public safety issues?
It does. We adopted the property maintenance code. You know, that's a minimum code that speaks to certain things. So kind of how I opened this, a lot of this, you'll look at and say, why can't code enforcement just address the issue? And the answer is, it can to a lot of it. We are pushing way more on code enforcement than we used to. You know, we used to tell people, put it behind the fence, we can't see it, we can't do anything about it. We don't do that anymore. We say, you got to get rid of it. If you don't clean it up, we tick it. We're still empathetic, but we tick it a lot quicker. So code enforcement does a lot, but the vacant structure, but the code enforcement piece, you know, there's nothing the person wants from us, right? We can threaten to tick it or tick it eventually. There's no real thing that they want from us. The vacant structure ordinance, kind of similar, but they need to get a registration, right? So for that, they need to clean up the yard, they need to get rid of the graffiti, they need to do something. So it's a little bit more meat. Also, it lets us in the building. Code enforcement, we have to stand on the sidewalk. Maybe a neighbor will let us onto their yard. This will get us on the property through the registration program to address anything we can't see from the right-of-way and to address anything in the home. Maybe it's, maybe there's rats in there, you know, we would never know that on the outside. So it does some different things. It also gets us paid for our work. Again, under code enforcement, we don't charge anything for the work. This is part of the code enforcement, this vacant structure. So we're getting paid for all the conversations we're having. Some of it will be a push. You know, I've dealt with a couple people, that one that I showed you that she sold it. Yeah, that was a code enforcement push. That'll work on some people. But having the vacant structure ordinance where someone has to take time out of their day to come to an inspection, to meet the fire marshal, to meet the CED, they know we're going to be watching it monthly, there will be some of them that say, all right, I need to do something. I either need to invest in it and get a renter in here, or I need to sell it and just, you know, make my money and be gone and get a family in there. So I hope I'm articulating that it's, it does more. Code enforcement's good, but it does some more.
Yeah, I get that it gives us more access. I see code enforcement as getting paid for their time through citations. So I don't see a real distinction between those two. But it's, again, it, I think the real distinction here is that we're asking people to let us into a structure rather than just view the outside of the structure, right?
That's a huge one. I'm speaking from CED. I think Chief Robinson can speak. There'll be some fire things for her to speak about.
This is something I can add here. So there is, when we're talking about vacant structures, we have things in our ordinance, but it spoke to, referred to specifically in fire code also. We have authority as the fire department with the fire code. There's a whole section 311 that's about vacant structures. With commercial, I'm glad to hear Councilwoman Pollock bring up, there was one large, should have been abandoned, industrial building in town. And we got in there for one reason, we realized that there was, people knew businesses, the property owner was running out spaces within that building, and there was multiple people doing business out there. They didn't understand how dangerous of an environment they were actually working in. Because people don't know what they don't know. Because we got inside there, we identified some very, very unsafe things about that building. We evacuated all the tenants out of there and marked, do not occupy. And we have, a subsequent thing, just happened to notice, again, people back in there. So it's a constant thing, but it's by chance of us getting over there and checking out. With industrial, we have a little bit more authority, especially if it's, if it's a business operating to go in. But when it's vacant, it gets harder. And sometimes you don't know who's in there. The one, he showed on there. PD got regularly called on because they're vagrants staying in there. We would call because they were starting fires. They had created a hazard with electrical that was coming into the building. Because again, they're just trying to, with residential, it gets even harder. And there's way too many firefighters that are losing their lives over vacant buildings because you don't know. There's a lot of risk with our lives or with our jobs, and we're willing to take that risk. But if we know something's vacant, we can know that there's not that life safety, which is our priority, which we will risk our lives to save a life. So when we have something we can mark as vacant, and you look at some of those homes from outside, you're like, that doesn't look bad at all. You get inside, you realize it's a death trap for us. We're not putting, when we can identify them, we can get inside, not only can we eliminate hazards that put their neighbors at risk, so we prevent their neighbors from losing their homes or something bad happen at their homes because we can mitigate it. We can also save, potentially save firefighters' lives because we prevent us from going into extremely dangerous situation that's unable to be identified from the outside. And I can show you videos, when we're inside with smoke, a lot of times we have zero visibility. You can't see your hand in front of your face. And depending on what's in there, that could be the situation. So it increases public safety of people living around these buildings, not only from blight and vermin and all that, but also something happens, depending what's stored in there, things can spread and impact others very quickly. And it also puts responders' lives at risks.
Thank you. Roger, I have more questions for you. Let's talk about the fees. What specific costs are the $600 registration fees designed to cover?
What are they, assigned to cover?
Designed to cover.
Designed to cover.
And is there a formal cost study or internal analysis for the $600 fee?
Yeah, if I can. I think Colleen shared some, I don't know, did you share the table?
I included the numbers, the direct numbers, not the whole tables.
Try to find that.
Oh, while he's pulling that up too, there are some costs on the fire side. Like you said, this is addressed specifically in the fire code. And the city of Ferndale's under the 2021 fire code. It doesn't matter, it was all the way back in 2012. But we are required to ensure that all combustibles are removed. So there's inspections that we should be doing on vacant properties to enforce the code that we have adopted as a city and that we should be operating under as the fire department. So my fire marshal, my inspectors do have some visits. He captures some of that in his samples to show the different costs. But with these, some properties might be less of our time. As far as the mitigation from the fire side, we would be doing to enforce the fire code to try to make this a safe property, handle that. Or some could be much more involved because there are certain systems they have to keep operating, suppression systems if they have a certain type of building when you get in a commercial. So it's our time to ensure these things are being maintained in compliance with the fire code as they would be informed of what they would have to do or not do. He can cover the rest.
So I put together two different tables on what would be probably a low amount of work for this program. And I think few people will hit the low amount of work where they answer the phone call the first time, they schedule it, we tell them things wrong, they fix it. You know, that'll be a low level. It's going to be harder than that. For the low level, we have Kathy issuing the permit. That's a $50 fee for all permits we issue. Brett doing an initial inspection for half an hour. Dennis Barr doing an initial inspection for a half an hour. Brett doing one follow-up inspection, so the fire marshal doesn't have to go back out. Brett doing five exterior inspections over the period. Me getting involved for 15 minutes. I won't be involved in everyone, but there'll be some where I need to find out who the person is and I have different resources. They can take me as long as a couple hours to call family members, go on Facebook, track people down. The building official for 15 minutes. Kathy, a half an hour additional time to call. And then Brett, a half an hour additional time. That's a low-level one. And then city vehicle, IT, insurances, gasoline, city hall use. A low-level one or an easy one, I think, would be the cost to the city directly, $338.56. On a more difficult one, where the people don't answer the phone, we're calling three and four times, we're doing multiple follow-up inspections, just a really difficult one. You have Kathy for a half an hour, for $50 for the issuing the permit. Brett doing an initial inspection, a half an hour. Dennis doing an initial inspection, a half an hour. Brett going back out, Dennis going back out. Brett doing three follow-up discussions for 15 minutes, answering persons' questions. You know, if they have a list of things to do, it's going to take conversations. Brett doing five exterior inspections. Brett has two issues with the exterior inspection, so he needs to reach out to the person in that six-month period. The CED director getting involved for 45 minutes. The building official getting involved, going out and helping them with some building stuff for an hour. Dennis with two follow-up discussions about sprinkler system or fire exits, whatever it might be. Again, 15 minutes per time. The fire chief getting involved. We have a number of similar type things that we're all involved with. You know how conversations can go, they can get a little extended. Police getting involved, I have a number of issues where the police, I have to track somebody down or do something. And then additional time for Kathy. Some of these difficult ones take six and seven phone calls and emails. A little additional time for Brett. And then the city attorney, a lot of times we have to reach out to the city attorney to say, how do we handle this situation? And then city vehicle, IT, insurance, gasoline, city hall use. A difficult one, I don't think it'll be the most difficult, but a difficult one would be a cost to the city of $809.64. So if you kind of average those two, I think we got... So if you kind of average those two, I think we got to $576 or something.
Yeah. An $809.64 would be a difficult one. Is that on outlay? Or would that be continued throughout each inspection? And again, these are hypotheticals, right? Um, I'm just trying to make sure that the fee makes sense to me. Um, and that it makes sense as an ongoing fee rather than as a potential upfront fee. Yeah, that's, that's that. As a follow-up to that, I would ask, did we do any sort of analysis on the proposed fee structure compared to other cities?
Previously, I looked up Hazel Park, because this is where I actually got the idea. I think they have a vacant structure of $300, maybe?
I've got the number handy. Let me stab that.
$400 annually.
Yep.
$400?
Yeah, so it's-
Inspections every six months.
Okay.
Yeah, it's $200 every six months. They're also the only city that I found that has an every-six-month inspections frequency. Um, looking through the other cities that I pulled, we've got Birmingham with a one-time fee of $100 for the registration. Um, but then a couple of other fees, again, one-time fees associated with the two inspections that they do. Berkeley with a $200 registration, as well as a $200 annual inspection. Huntington Woods with $125 annual and a $45 inspection fee. Um, Centerline's $200, Ann Arbor's $100, Pontiac's $500. Pontiac is the one that I know about. Um, they also do not do interior inspections. Then we have Detroit with anywhere from $223 to $501 for residential. Then only $197 for commercial, which is fascinating and seems odd to me. Um, Southfield with $300 for a registration. $175 for annual certifications, or a lower dollar amount. And Hamtramck with $200 residential, $500 for commercial, which makes a little bit more sense. $200 to $300 for renewal. Oak Park, $40 for registration, $150 for one-time fee inspection fee. And Warren, $200 with $125 renewal. And Charter Town, uh, Charter Township of Royal Oak, $300 with $200 inspection fee. And $75, $75 additional. All of that said, our annual be, our annual would be $1,200, and that feels too high. Um, I get what you're saying, but it just, the minute I heard that number, that's why I did the due diligence of just pulling other cities, because it just felt like that's gonna be a pressure point that's gonna come back to council. And maybe it won't, um, but as a pressure point that could come back to council, I wonder if that's going to end up being a, like a legal issue. And I guess that would be a question to our city attorney.
Through, yeah, through the chair, before we get too far down the financial aspect, that's actually the next item. I'm just wondering if we should keep that conversation to the next item.
I'll gladly reiterate myself during that.
That's fine, yeah. It's just, I, I think we should probably focus on, on the ordinance itself, you know, and the fees.
So then I'll focus the next question on the inspection frequency. Um, what measurable data or risk factors justify inspecting vacant properties every six months in addition to monthly exterior checks? I didn't see anybody, and that includes Hazel Park, doing the monthly exterior checks.
We wanna go above and beyond. Um, you know, that's how we've set it up. Um, it, it's not meant, you know, I'll say it this way. You will probably make the vacant structure person, owner mad. You will make six people around them pretty happy. You've heard from a couple of people here. So I'm not terribly sympathetic to the vacant structure person who's owned it for 15 years, and it's an eyesore. Again, there's exceptions if someone has a good reason and they're generally maintaining it. But it really is council's prerogative. That's how we've programmed it. We think in every six-month inspection, because people do stuff within six months. They load it up with things they shouldn't, they store things in there. You know, the first one's gonna be really difficult. Second one might be easier. Maybe third and fourth then start getting a muscle memory. Um, but we thought that was prudent. Uh, they know they're being watched. You know, they know they're, the, the, the house is being inspected. Uh, we'll be contacting them if there's something wrong. I think the neighbors probably wanna see us walking around the house and know that we're out there. Um, but really, it's, it's how we've recommended it, but council can amend, the ordinance if they feel like there's a different inspection program that would be better. Timing.
We have one example in town. Um, we got a call, neighbors actually called the fire department and said, my neighbor's house, like the wall is separating and it's coming apart. And so we responded out there, and then they contacted me. And it's one of those things that this house had been vacant. And structurally, the house literally was coming apart, and the walls were actually falling apart from each other. And neighbors were concerned that there was a closure, like this is gonna fall on our house. Um, so we worked with DPW and I worked with the, um, utility companies. And we were able to actually help facilitate getting this house demolished and knocked down and creating, um, eliminate the safety that was, um, occurring to the neighbors' homes where, because the walls were falling out, it was gonna fall onto their homes. And that's one of those things that I under, I completely understand where you're coming from, and we wanna do our diligence. If we waited six months between checking out the house, that stuff would have been happening. And it, if the neighbors weren't diligent to call us, because they started getting really worried about their homes, it probably would have, you know, fallen before we came back in those six months. And it's, it's hard to know what is right or not, because there's always gonna be these different examples. And that one home, um, that you would have thought was vacant, and there was a poor gentleman still living in there. The roof was caved in, it was Oliver's bed, and he was waiting, trying to get housing somewhere else, so he was still in there. It, it just allows us to kind of help facilitate things too. Sometimes the property owner, in the one case, was having a hard time facilitating things with the utility company. Us getting involved helped that conversation move things along, because once the fire department identifies there's a hazard, it can help move things farther along. And I think it just helps us to keep the eyes on, to keep everybody safe.
Also, I just wanted to state that I'm, I'm looking at this ordinance, and over the 30 years that I've been here, there's never been anything quite so rigorous, uh, in, in the past. And I'm just thinking that maybe, you know, the reason why we're seeing so much of it now is because, uh, the community got kind of used to not uh, being subjected to that enforcement. Um, and I also think that the reason why some of those fees and the different fees that you mentioned, Mayor Protim Makowski, is maybe because, um, the amount, the, the staff members in those other cities, maybe they're greater than the number of staff members that we have in ours. Uh, so yes, I think you should get paid for what you do, and it's few of you, fewer of you to do it. I just think that with this, with this ordinance, I think it will enforce, uh, some enforcement that we've seen not enforced in a long time. Um, but I would like for it, for you to touch on, there are circumstances that you mentioned where someone, maybe there's a reason why their structure is looking the way it is. Uh, can you kind, kind of touch on what that process would be? I think you said it was not likely, but it could be more people than we know that have that situation.
Correct. A lot of this is, I don't know. Like, I, I have some experience in code enforcement. We're gonna learn our way. We might do this and realize a lot more people are simpler on this. And maybe the fee does need to come out, down. Maybe it's much worse than we thought and needs to go up. Maybe my inspectors say, hey, once a month, this is not necessary. This is too much. And then we come back and recommend to change it to every two months or something else. So part of this is just creating a program that I think is applicable, and then rolling it out. We will likely have changes. Um, but yes, there, there will be exceptions, um, um, to it. So for example, you know, it relates mostly to maintenance. So let's pretend somebody has somebody taking care of their home. It's technically vacant. The person's in a nursing home. The family doesn't wanna sell it, because the state will take the money, but it's being maintained. You know, a resident will call and say, I have this vacant structure next to me. I want you to do something. You know, that'll be one that I say, I hear what you're saying, but it's being maintained. They're in a nursing home. We would talk to the family members. We'd say, apply for an exception. There'd be something there. We don't wanna cause undue hardship. It's for people that bought homes in the downturn, don't wanna do anything with them. Maybe inherited them a long time ago, don't wanna do anything with them. So there's a specific group that we're focusing on that aren't maintaining them. Um, there could be other exceptions to the vacant structure program. Maybe it's in a trust, and it's going through some legalness, and there's no responsible party. Again, you know, maybe we would say that's an exception. Um, if they're selling the home, hey, don't make me pay this money. I'm about to list it with an agent. We can say, okay, we'll give you one month, get us a listing agreement, so we know it's moving forward. We're not gonna go out and inspect it. This is gonna get to a better day just naturally. So there might be a variety of exceptions. I don't picture them being often, because if we give them away, then everybody will want them. Um, but there will be exceptions that we say, okay, this isn't the one we're focusing on. Some of the pictures I sent, I showed you would be ones we were focusing on. So hopefully answered that.
And you personally would probably be the one investigating that and tracking down that information, whether something's in trust or things like that.
Correct. My staff, I can sleuth around in five things. So they go to the basic BSNA, they can't find somebody. I can go to White Pages, I have an account. I pay extra to be able to see other information. Known acquaintances, I'll call those people and ask if they know this person. So I'm usually tracking down the really difficult ones.
Through the chair, I just wanna say, um, that, uh, thank you for this ordinance. I think it's an important step for us. We've been doing a lot of work on the ordinance committee, behind the scenes, getting this ready. And, uh, I do have some concerns about the fees, as you know, and we'll discuss that.
I mean, to the point of the fees, I think, you know, the point of fees in these sorts of situations is that you are trying to disincentivize behavior. I mean, they're, they're intended to be. They have to pay for a sorts of fee, right? It has to match the cost of the service or the cost of the government function doing the fee. So it can't be any higher, any lower. Um, but we've chosen to do a higher level of inspection and thus have a higher fee in order to disincentivize this kind of behavior. I think, you know, the unique thing, and I can only speak to a couple of the cities on the list, um, Mayor Protim that you put together. Uh, but you know, the reality is vacant structures in Detroit, uh, we just demolish them. I mean, like, they're, you know, they don't, there aren't many that are just sitting around with vacant. If they're vacant owners, we seize them, we demolish them, if they're in a bad state. That's, we use our police powers for that. Um, and I know some of these other cities, similar programs, they kind of, they don't, they're, once their property gets to a certain state, they move through the nuisance abatement process under state law. And they either take the property or demolish the property, lean the property, these sorts of things. We, we don't do that, because we're smaller. Like, it's, that kind of enforcement is like, that's not a Ferndale-scale enforcement, you know? Um, so, you know, the fee, I'd like to see how it goes. Um, I'm hopeful that it will disincentivize, especially the absentee property owners. This is really my concern. It's been the concern in a lot of the other cities on this list, um, especially the larger cities. Um, Pontiac, Detroit, um, uh, Royal Oak, these were cities that, Troy as well, that had a lot of absentee ownership issues, where folks bought, like Roger said, a lot of properties during the downturns. Or at various, you know, points where they saw a neat in into the property market, and then they just neglect the property. It just sits for years. And, um, that's, I mean, I consider that to be a type of like, it's predatory essentially. You're, you're holding this property, especially at a time when people need housing, and we desperately need housing, and you're just sitting on it. That's extremely problematic. Um, and there's only so much we can do, right? Like, private property rights. This is the United States, and that's one of our core protected things is private property. But where we can try to enforce or push behavior, I want us to keep doing that. And so, you know, I wanna see how things go. I wanna see what kind of success we have with this.
Uh, if I may, not to complicate things further, but hearing kind of the split on the fee question, and I know we're getting ahead of ourselves here, but some of this may necessitate changes to the ordinance itself. I kind of see two paths forward on the fee question. Um, we've already determined that we just don't have enough data to determine the actual reasonable cost of performing this. So we're taking our, our best assessment based on staff time. Two ways we can approach that. Uh, one, we could make a change inside of the ordinance language that simply states, similar to the exemption process, uh, an applicant could file for a partial fee waiver. I've certainly seen it in inspection programs where maybe you get 50% off, up to 50% off, uh, if your first go-around is very simple and, and nothing changes from time to time. Uh, alternatively, we could just set a date today after the approval to review this in five months, because no one will be coming up for their second renewal sooner than that.
I think that is a really fascinating and good idea, um, so that we revisit this after we get some data. And I guess the question would become, how much data do you think we'll have at the five-month mark? If you're doing like two per week?
Yeah, we'll have, I think, a decent amount. Again, that's the first round, so we have to see, maybe this can get easier. But I think we'll have a decent amount of data to say it's actually much easier than we thought, or it's harder than we thought. And also, maybe we find the once-a-month, like the inspectors come back and say, we're not finding anything, there's no reason to do that. So I think we could check in on all the ordinance in five months and have some decent feelings on it. And, um, fire will have a little bit of inspection under the belt to give comments on.
Through, through the chair. And keep in mind that these fees are not set in stone. You know, if, if we agree to a fee, it doesn't mean it's there for the rest of our lives. Um, we get to review and approve fees every year. Um, there've been a number of fees, I know, through the years that have fluctuated. Some have gone down, some have gone up, um, depending on how much, you know, impact it has to our budget.
So maybe one proposal here would be to, instead of starting with the higher fee, what if we started with a slightly lower fee? And then the data tells us whether that fee is sufficient or not.
I, my personal recommendation would be to start with the higher fee, because we know the initial round is going to be the most difficult. Um, and it's always easier to message on decreasing a fee than increasing it.
Fair, fair point.
And also, we've had, uh, over the years, so many complaints regarding it. I think that the higher fee will send a message.
Yeah, through, through the chair, just uh, coming off that fee conversation. So I, I'm glad that we're going through with this. This is long, long overdue. Um, for those of us who lived in the city prior to the, you know, 2008 financial collapse, um, people, you know, basically walking away from their homes, the banks taking them over. There were a ton of homes throughout the city that were abandoned. Um, and the banks did what they could to close them up. But I had one on each side of me for a number of years. Um, and because we were dealing with a financial situation in the city, we didn't have a full staff of, uh, of city inspectors. So, you know, a lot of these properties didn't get in, uh, investigated properly. Um, so had this been around, we would have at least had something to bring in, you know, some of the additional income for those properties that needed to be properly inspected. So I'm, I'm glad that we're finally doing this.
And through the chair, I know my line of questioning doesn't seem like I'm excited that we're doing this, but I am excited that we're doing this. I'm just picky about things. Um, I, I too was around during the, the financial crisis, and my neighbor's house was stripped of every piece of copper, with the doors left open and birds flying in and people going in at odd hours of the night. And it was horrifying. Um, and in walking around town during campaign season, I too have noticed a lot of homes that are either abandoned or there is something terribly wrong happening with that home.
Very creepy houses.
So it's, it's something that I do have a lot of hope that we, we get to a better place by way of this ordinance. Um, I just am picky about particulars, that's all.
And you know, um, Protim Makowski, you brought up a really good point. Um, something you just said, um, really resonated with me, which is, there's something going on. It, it may not always be, we may go there thinking we're going in for a, a, a code enforcement thing, but you both, you, Roger, you and, and Chief Robinson have both given examples of, we get to a structure, we assume one situation, and then we realize someone is in need of help. So I, when I was campaigning, met a resident at a home that genuinely looked like something out of a scary movie. And, and the man was clearly unwell. out of a scary movie. And, and the man was clearly unwell. He was clearly in some sort of later-stage dementia, clearly did not have any caregiving whatsoever. And so I was able to call and get him help, get him services, get him moved into a situation that was safer for him. And so, like, when, I'm obviously not a code inspector, but you know, when I reached the porch, my first assumption was, oh my God, this person is not maintaining their home. And then you start to talk to that person, you realize there's so much more going on here. And I think one of the things that I think gets overlooked with code enforcement and FIRE code enforcement stuff is that, that's also an opportunity for us to engage with residents who maybe do need help and need services. And that's where we, as a city government, can stand above what other governments do a lot of time, and we will connect them to resources. We'll say, you know what, I know it's not my job, quote unquote, to do this, but I'm going to go ahead and call X, Y, and Z organizations because I really think this person could use some assistance with this. And I think that's a really important thing to note, and I'm glad you, you kind of hit on that, Pro Tem, because it's easy to assume one thing, but until we know the whole story, and then we do know the story, having that compassion and having that next step, that's what Ferndale is. And, you know, I know that this ordinance will let us punish the bad behavior, but also has the flexibility to enable us to support and help people who are maybe in those situations.
There, there are a bunch of examples like that, where maybe a neighbor would report it as vacant. We, that's the impetus versus a code enforcement that'd just be like, eh, you know, let's send them a letter. That might be the impetus where we actually reach out to the person. We have one, if you remember, a little while back, called for a code enforcement issue, didn't have heat in his home. We had one recently, because the OLSA grant, they applied to re-roof the roof in the garage. I had a conversation with them to say, you know, this is more cosmetic. Well, her husband has dementia, she can't get upstairs anymore. Now she's going to apply for the OLSA grant to put a bathroom in her first floor and connect her with the county's loan program. So there will be stories of where we think it's a vacant structure, make a connection it's not, but there's other help that's needed for something. Reach out to their family members, they might not realize the person needs help, they're kind of estranged a little bit, they get back in their life. There will be a lot of success stories with it.
Yes, as long as we're leading with empathy, that's, that's really all I'm asking for because I, I keep on thinking about different situations. I know of at least two that I had to bring to Chief AMI, where I thought either the person passed away or the house was abandoned. And in both situations, somebody was living there, but they didn't have running water. We can see it through BSA. I'm thinking about people going through probate. Having lived through the hellscape of probate for like two years, I, I know what that's like. And clearly I had a home that was empty because my parents were dead. So it's, it's something that adding that on would have been difficult for me at that time. So I guess there's, there's a part of me that's just, I'm feeling those what-if scenarios with this, and I'm glad that we're doing it. I'm glad that we're going to lead with empathy. And as long as we keep that as kind of one of our core values, then we should be fine.
That would be the example, you used the personal example, but if you're maintaining it, and we reach out to you and you have, hey, I'm trying to, I'm managing work, I'm a single parent, you know, I'm getting to it, give me six more months, that would be an exemption. We'll give you an exemption, just keep up the maintenance, and then I'll talk with the neighbors and say, now's not the time, you know? So there would be an example.
All right. Well, I'm going to move that we approve the ordinance to amend Chapter Six Building Regulations, Article Six dash one, to add Section Six dash five through Six dash fourteen, vacant and abandoned buildings, prescribe penalties, and repeal conflicting ordinances to the Ferndale Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Amendment, item eight B, amendment to the 2024-2025 fee schedule.
Roger? I mean, again, not a question. And I think your, I think your instinct, Colleen, is correct that we go higher initially. But how do we, from a structural standpoint, how do we do this so that we know that we're going to revisit this in five months?
So if you want to be absolutely certain of that, we could make it a part of the motion that this would be added as a discussion item at a date certain and then set that date. So what is the timeline associated with posting this? When is the ordinance expected to go into effect now that it's passed tonight?
Does this say 10 days after the hearing? Is this one of those? I don't know the difference.
Usually it's either 10 days or we have to post it, post a public notice.
Post a public notice.
Okay. So assuming that's another week to a week and a half.
Yeah, it just needs to go in local, uh, local newspaper. Probably two weeks tops.
So then I would say by the first meeting in October, we would still be before that initial renewal window, but have five full months of the actual project or the program being in place. So if you'd like to make a motion to approve the fee and then set a discussion for, let's see, October 13th, 2025.
So two separate motions?
It can be one, if you're good enough to marry them together.
Who's going to do that? Who's going to combine the language? Greg, you're pretty good at that, aren't you?
I move to amend the 2024-2025 fee schedule to add, under licensing fees, a six-month vacant building fee and the amount of $600 as submitted by the Community Economic Development Director, and to revisit this item, or this fee schedule, at the first meeting, October 2025.
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Roger.
The ordinance committee. All right, now we're going on to call to council, where I am going to turn it over to the city manager for department head updates.
So before we get into department head updates, I just did want to note for the community's knowledge and for council, a recent change that we were made aware of regarding the city's assessing services through the county. Ferndale is one of 32 communities who contracts for assessing services through Oakland County. Recently, we were made aware of a very dramatic increase to the cost for those services. It has been recommended by their finance committee, and it now goes to the full Board of Commissioners on May 1st. This is a 92% increase from fiscal year '25 to '26, or about $167,000 in FY '26 that is unaccounted for to provide those services. Almost $350,000 a year, they're asking to provide assessing services for the city. This change, from what we've heard from the county, is driven in part by the county trying to ascribe a higher amount associated with indirect costs and operating costs. So it's a combination of wages, benefits, operating costs, and indirect costs. This new formula dramatically changes the landscape for us and those other 31 communities. And it is the opinion of, of myself and others in my position that this really equates to a double tax on residents in those communities. Residents of Ferndale already pay county taxes, they pay for general operating services of the county, and they pay for the indirect operations of the county. So we are, we are asking that council and the community reach out to our county commissioners and let them know their sentiments about this increase. Let them know that they feel that we do already pay a substantial portion in taxes for the general operating services of the county, and that they should continue down the path of offering these services for only their direct costs associated with them. Alternatively, I have been in communication with my counterparts in Madison Heights, Hazel Park, and Clausen about a potential collaborative agreement for future services, either taking the form of an RFP for a private contract, or one of us hiring staff and then entering into inter-local agreements. Because of the timeline associated with this, I'd like to get some council feedback as to whether or not you'd be comfortable with us moving forward with that if and when the Board of Commissioners does consider adoption of those fees. Again, that would be May 1st. So I'd know by the end of this week what was happening with that fee structure. And then we'd need to move very quickly either to hire the associated staff and enter into local agreements or authority, or go for an RFP. Seeing to say, go ahead, Colleen.
Yep. I, I would support going forward with, with pursuing that option.
I would, I would also agree. The, the only caveat to that is, is it us that would be doing the hiring of an individual, or is that open to multiple cities in that inter-local agreement?
So that's what, that's what we'd still be discussing. Right now, Madison Heights is really taking the lead on that potential RFP. I, Ferndale could take the lead on the staff. Honestly, like, at $350,000 a year, I could hire three full-time staff, which we don't even need, to operate our assessing services. So if we get any outside support for that, it's still a win for us comparatively.
Yeah, this, this is really upsetting because basically the county wants to increase their income, and rather than ask the voters to increase a millage, they're coming to the cities and saying, you need to pay more, which basically is costing the citizens more.
And I, I will note, under their projections, they're actually projecting and planning to make money off of this.
Absolutely, of course.
Yes. The, the revenue from it would be in excess of what they've articulated as their costs.
So those of you who know Mr. Coulter, have a conversation with him.
Through the chair, is this an opportunity for the cities to band together like we did with state statutory revenue sharing and try to pass, you know, language that identifies this as an issue? Maybe it's a little bit too late to do that if they're deciding in May.
Yeah, it may be a bit late for this particular issue. And I need to do some more research because there is some statutory authority that we can enter into a specific assessing authority with other communities. So really, there's three options. I just don't know that the authority is something we can get off the ground in less than 60 days.
Yeah, this is disappointing. I mean, this is, this is, this is the county wanting to balance their books without doing the hard work that we're doing, frankly, asking our residents for a tax increase. They don't want to do the same. They don't want to go out and do that hard work and do that political, politically difficult thing. And instead, they're going to balance it on our backs. And as a result, we have to raise taxes. As a result, we have to cut services in other places to pay for this stuff. It's ridiculous. Ridiculous.
Sounds like we all know what we have to do, so.
Yes. I, I have, I have my direction and then clear understanding from council on next steps. So in terms of other department updates, we have the Clerk's Office.
Just a reminder, again, that there is an election on Tuesday, May 6th. If you choose to vote in person, polls are open normal time, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you want to vote your absentee ballot, there are about two-thirds of ballots that are still out there. Just make sure those are into our office by 8:00 p.m. or drop them off at ballot drop boxes. It's probably too late now to put them in the mailbox. I would recommend actually dropping those off to us. And then finally, early voting is going on right now as well. And so if you do choose to vote at the early voting site at the Hazel Park Community Center, they're open from 8:30 to 4:30 every day. On Thursday, they're open from noon to eight. So please, please vote. Thank you.
Sustainability?
Hello, Mayor and Council. We have two updates tonight. First, the special recycling for hazardous household waste, electronic waste, and the paper shredder will be here at City Count, or City Hall on May 17th, Saturday. So share that with your neighbors, constituents, folks around town. They can contact myself or our special events director with any questions. The materials list is extensive, but essentially includes what you'd be able to take to Sacra with an appointment. So I'm happy to chat with folks if they have specific questions, or to answer questions about what can go in their curbside cart versus needs to be brought here to the event. Additionally, I wanted to give an update about the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission recommending to not have No-Mo-May this year. So Ferndale recommended that to the council. The council is moving forward, we're not having No-Mo-May. So the normal ordinance will take effect on May 1st, so that yards must be kept to seven inches maximum. Residents are encouraged to participate in a pollinator-aware yard care instead of No-Mo-May. We view this as more permanent action, something that is going to support pollinators, the ecosystem, sustainability year-round. So since the city has evaluated No-Mo-May, we have discovered the effectiveness has maybe not been what we hoped. In year one, we had 704 signups. In year two, we had 133. So there's less active participation. I know a lot of folks are excited about, or were excited about the program, but we had a lot more feedback that we wanted to try to find a more balanced approach. So we, instead, we suggest to support pollinators, ecosystems, and sustainability, that residents take this permanent action, which could be participating in our planned natural landscape program, could be signing up for the free seed, native seed packets we have here at City Hall. They can contact me, or they can pick them up at the front desk at City Hall. That was supplied by a grant, so folks, and then curated by our city commissioners. Or you can participate in other programs like the Oakland County Native Plant Giveaway. And I'm happy to have conversations about what, you know, native plants in your space may look like. We have a lot of subject matter experts here, community members as well. I'm not going to say that I'm the most active, but I'm happy to have those conversations and include folks in those conversations. We also recommend potentially changing your mowing habits, going to a longer cut and mowing less often. So in order to, you know, maintain that more positive ecosystem, as well as even starting small, planting those native plants in a pot, right? Something that you can have pollinators next to your yard right now. So those are our suggestions and happy to take any comments or questions. Thank you.
Finance?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a little, uh, little, start that over. Just a real quick update. We will be going live with BSNA payments on Wednesday. BSNA staff will be here to kind of onboard our staff and the proper use of the new point-of-sale terminals. So the benefit of us going to BSNA payments is that, one, we will have a much better level of customer service. We currently are working with Point and Pay, and whenever there's an issue with Point and Pay, it's forever to get a response from them on anything. And so with BSNA, we, they already have proven customer service with our other modules. And so I am confident that that will be the same customer service that we are able to provide to the residents. Because a lot of times, they'll come to us if, say, for example, they have a, they will double pay or double charge on their, on their credit card for whatever reason. We reach out to Point and Pay, get nothing for a week, so it looks like we're the ones that are not being responsive. And so we won't have to worry about that with Point and Pay, with BSNA payments. It's pretty much a cost-neutral transition. There will be a nickel increase per transaction, but that was a nickel increase that I, I felt that we wouldn't be able to eat. Not eat, but it would, it would allow for us to actually provide the better customer service because we get a lot of complaints from people about Point and Pay. And so this would at least remove them from the counter. Point and Pay will still be in the parking kiosk, so, because BSNA is still new to the merchant processing game, and so they haven't really figured out the mechanisms for using it for our parking meters. But once that happens, I know Bruce is going to be ready and willing to switch as well. So I just want to give everybody an update. We have sent messaging out to the public as far as the, the switch, because they will have to re-enter their information into the BSA online portal. So when they log in, they'll be able to go in and do auto-enroll as well, once they do that. So staff have already been kind of put on notice, and so they'll be ready for any questions that they have, so they could just call the number at City Hall, and we'll be able to answer any questions they have about this transition. Any questions? Thanks.
And communications?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just another Ferndale Learn update for you. So we are at week five, just about the halfway point. This program is flying by. I'm very, very grateful to our students. We have one in here. And I'm also really grateful to our staff as well. Staff has been amazing, and I'm learning a lot in this program as well, both from staff and also just how to be a better communicator, like hearing the questions and the feedback. It's really inspiring me to kind of tighten things up. So anyways, so since last time... So anyways, so since last time, our students met with Chief Emmy and got a tour of the station. And then last week, they met with our finance team to do a deep dive into budgeting, property taxes, water billing, headly, all that good stuff. So this week, the students are meeting with the Public Works Department and Logan, the Zero Waste Manager, to talk about all things sustainability, composting, infrastructure, all that good stuff. And hopefully, if the weather's nice, they'll get to check out the trucks outside, which is always a crowd pleaser. And then next week, they will be with the IT department as well as the Downtown Development Authority. So it's still not too late to sign up. You can visit bit.ly/ferndalelearn2025. That's B-I-T dot L-Y slash ferndalelearn2025. Or residents can email me at rcolman@ferndaleandmy.gov. Thank you.
That's all.
Started over there last time. All right, over here. All right. Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Cleanup Club, Walking Lightly, Desert Oasis, and Move with Bright and All Our Residents that went out and did the cleanup on Earth Day. They collected over 515 pounds of trash from the community. And they followed it by meditation, so super cool day. Thank you. Want some member, Polika?
I have nothing this week.
Want some member, Johnson?
Nothing from me.
I wanted to, a couple things. First, I wanted to thank a couple businesses, because I don't know if you all know, but this past weekend, this past Saturday, was Tag Day. And if you don't know what that is, it's when Ferndale Arts Boosters for Ferndale Public Schools, whether it be for orchestra, band, et cetera. They go, they're allowed to stand out in front of businesses and solicit donations. And I just want to thank New York Bagel, always allowing the, the students to do that every year. I want to thank Western Market. I want to thank Westbourne Market. I want to also thank the newcomer, Modern Natural Baby, which was interesting. So the, the band was able to raise, just by soliciting donations from community members, almost $3,000. So that was a good day for them. Now, speaking of, we heard a comment regarding our fees and our, our participation in continuing education and organizations. One of the organizations that we do belong to as a city is Michigan Municipal League. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Michigan Municipal League, and I think it's really beneficial, because we have lobbyists on that board who actually fight for initiatives that are important to cities. For example, I got a notification just recently about how the House Government Operations took up three bills that would ban local governments from adopting sanctuary cities and withhold revenue sharing from any community that enforces or adopts a sanctuary policy. This bill would also allow for an individual resident to bring action against a community or file a complaint with an attorney general if they believe the municipality is in violation of the law. There is potential for these complaints to be brought before the circuit court, but does not allow a municipality to recoup any of the associated costs if they prevail. So this is just one of the initiatives that the Michigan Municipal League, our lobby team, looks, just keeps an eye on. And also, we also belong to the Legal Defense Fund, which would be beneficial to us that should we need additional advice or legal representation on behalf of the Michigan Municipal League. So belonging to organizations is not all that bad. There have been times when I've gone to the meetings at the Michigan Municipal League, where we voted on something as a board of about 60 of us covering all states, all, all across Michigan, that, that we've actually voted and said, yes, lobby team, go and fight for this on our behalf. And I literally would see them leave and head to the Capitol in order to speak on behalf of municipalities. So it's an important thing. I'm proud to be part of it, and I am glad that we have them on our side. As far as the initiative that I've spoke of, this is something that they're keeping their eye on. And once I learn more, I will keep, I will keep you abreast of it. Because I've had email after email from individuals, some, some in this community, some not, asking why we're not a sanctuary city. So I just want you to know that, and what I tell those individuals, is that Ferndale's been a longtime community where we've sort of built a reputation for ourselves that it's a welcoming community. And it's not something that we have to turn into sanctuary status, because it's something that's understood in this community. And I don't see that going away anytime soon, because this community is way too involved, way too strong to let someone come in and tell us that we can't welcome people in this community. I just wanted to state that. I think it's important, because I've heard a lot of traction regarding it. I don't know if anyone else has, but I know I have. But with that being said, I'm opening it up for council for any last questions or comments, because I know sometimes they can come up, all right?
Vote Tuesday.
Vote Tuesday, yes. Support our schools and support our city and our staff and our, and our services, for sure. I know me and my three sons and my daughter who's coming home from school, you already have a yes vote from us. So with that being said, this meeting is...